That you're going to change.
Unbelievable start to this fight. Give him the ball. Vicious right hand. And the referee has already stopped the fight. Mama mia. Matisse, oh, it fires off the right hand. A Jose goes down. More has stopped the fight. Lucas Matisse has won. Oh, they're, oh, he knocks them down in the swat. What a beautiful win out of the crowd.
I'm in control here. I'm not gonna let this get me down. I'm not gonna let this destroy me. I'm coming back.
We all know, uh, Fury, he just, he just up on me, man. This is just for Andy. You know where I am, you know what time, you know what place. I ain't scared of nobody. I come in your backyard, baby, but that's my man.
Listen, anytime, anyplace, anywhere, I'll fight here in your backyard. Like a duck, let's go. I'll beat you, you're broke, man, from here up.
Gonzalez drops, but it's for the left, the left hook. He's hurt, he's hurt bad guy. He was rattled by that left hook by God, but it was around one. Goes down again. No, the Mia, Gonzalez has done it. Right hand by Fung Fung. Coming forward. Stevenson bending over. Stevenson goes down with a strike right hand. And a, oh. Drops Blavatsky for the first time in his career.
Just set up the hand, I just take the legs off, fuckin' guy.
Oh. Goes hook, the first time in his career. He has been knocked to the canvas. Can he get up? Thirty seconds left to go. Blavatsky trying to pull off the upset. Oh, yeah, again. Hooking in major trouble. It's over, it's over. A sensational right hand knockout by a bloody quad matchmaker. And that is the keystone moment of his career.
Talent you have naturally. Skill is only developed by hours and hours and hours of beating on your craft. There's no easy way around it. No matter how talented you are, your talent is gonna fail you if you're not skilled.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back. Jimmy Sports Network coming to you live. Told you guys on yesterday, we'll be back for a film study review. And we doing this one on Canelo. We, we doing Canelo versus Kodo on tonight. And this looks to be a fight that can probably put us in position to see what Canelo could do versus Triple G. Now, this fight in particular going down September 16th is going to be perhaps, probably, we'll say the second biggest fight this year after finding out that Floyd Money Mayweather has really put himself in position to be pay-per-view king. Am I right? I mean Floyd, I mean, he did it again. Floyd has by far put himself in a position to where, I mean, you can call it what you want, right? You can say that it was, it was a money grab. You can say that Floyd pretty much cheated his way to the top. You know, you have people saying all kind of things about Floyd. But if you ask me, Floyd is the true definition of an Al Hayman fighter. And you can't help but be proud of what Mayweather done. If you're a true boxing fan, am I right? You have no choice but to be proud. And if you ask me, Mayweather did it the right way. There's no other way that Mayweather could have done this. And from what we seen so far from Mayweather and his team alone, has been nothing but great things. Nothing but great things. And so hats off to him, you know, hats off to him. But this fight in particular, is this fight going to be bigger than that? I don't know. Because to be bigger than that, you have to do over 6.5 million pay-per-view buys. 6.5 mil. I mean, that is crazy. His fight with Oscar De La Hoya was what? 2.4 million. His fight with Manny Pacquiao was 4.6 million. And then his fight with McGregor is now 6.5 million. That's ridiculous. Floyd has put himself in position to be the greatest in boxing. I mean, he's pay-per-view king by far. He's pay-per-view king. And those of you who agree, I'd love to see you like and share the show and post in the comments that you totally agree with the simple fact that Mayweather's pay-per-view king. Shout out to my boy Alan. What's up, Alan? But he's pay-per-view king. Right now, there is nobody in the sport of boxing who is doing numbers, numbers like this. Mark said McGregor said he, he was gonna beat up Floyd and what a mug he was. Well, absolutely. We all know that, right? I don't think it was, if you're a true fan of boxing, you already knew there was nothing to worry about in this fight in particular with these guys. Nothing. I mean, I wasn't worried about anything. I knew Floyd was gonna win. We said it in the show that Floyd was gonna win by knockout. And so it just looks to be amazing right now for the sport of boxing. We talked about yesterday, Erickson Lubin and Charlo going at it. And I said this before they even made the announcement. So they made the announcement officially today. And it's crazy. It's crazy that that fight is gonna be a really good fight. And we're still in the news on what's going on with, uh, with Anthony Joshua, what Joshua's going to do. Is he going to vacate the WBA? And speaking of vacations, right? Terrence Crawford just vacated the IBF at 140. So that means he plans to stick around at 140. And that fight at 140 could possibly be with Mikey Garcia. Although Mikey has been calling out Miguel Cotto, but we know he's just blowing smoke up our asses. Let's just be real. Miguel Cotto versus, versus, uh, Mikey Garcia? Come on, where they gonna fight at? 154? They tripping. But to this fight in particular, we talked on yesterday and we said, well, okay, what is it that Canelo is going to do when a guy like Golovkin brings that pressure, right? And like Mark is saying, Triple G is a machine. He is a machine, right? He reminds me kind of like, like Drago on, uh, Rocky, right? Just built solid, you know, just crazy power, you know? But Triple G, to me, today we had the media call. We had the media call today. And, uh, it was with Golovkin. We was able to talk to Golovkin. And Triple G, to me, he just said, he seems more relaxed than any fight he's ever been in. And in those fights, he dominated, right? He dominated those fights. And, but with this fight, he knows this is the fight that he's been wanting for a long time. And we're gonna get it. And he's embracing the moment. He's embracing the moment. He talked about that today. He wasn't, he didn't seem over arrogant. He didn't seem to be, you know, what, over confident? He, he wasn't none of that. He was just saying that basically like, you know, the moment is here and he's gonna be patient and he's gonna do his job and what he's been doing since he started in boxing. And so I'm looking for, for Golovkin, right? To do something out of the ordinary of what he's accustomed to doing, just a little bit, just a little bit. Only reason why I say that is because I just see him being a little bit more patient with a guy like Canelo. And when we do this fight with him versus, uh, Kodo in a few minutes, we gonna see exactly what we talked about yesterday. How Canelo likes to sit down on his punches, right? And land those two to three punch combinations. But what we wanna see is can he do it off his back foot, right? Cause a guy like Triple G is gonna walk you down. And he will take a punch to land the perfect punch, right? That one that could really change events of this whole fight in its entirety. So that's what we looking for when we watch this film review. And we're just gonna go ahead and jump in it. I mean, there's, there's nothing more left to say. Um, Delgado said Canelo is, is strong for Triple G, Canelo by knockout. But Delgado, like we talked about yesterday, this is a true middleweight that Canelo is facing. This is a guy who has more power than Canelo. This is a guy who has a real strong chin, right? Never been knocked down ever in his career, ever. Never been defeated, right? So it's gonna be tough for Canelo. And Canelo, every, every middleweight he's faced, every big time fight he's had, it's been at a catchaway, right? But now, we gonna really see a good middleweight bout. Shout out to Ezekiel, Team Triple G. He loves Triple G and there's nothing wrong with that. Christopher Wilson said, you gonna sell a fight if McGregor was saying, hey, we, hey, McGregor is, we're done with that. We're done with that. You know, six and a half million pay-per-view buys. Hey, Floyd is the man. He's the man. And shots out to Al Hayman, man. Al Hayman is the guy. But we're gonna jump into this film room with this fight with Canelo and Kodo. And so it's a few things we're gonna look for in this fight in particular, right? And the things we're gonna look for in this fight is how Canelo put his punches together. Because Canelo, to me, I was watching this fight earlier, right? Canelo, to me, from what it's worth, I kinda need to see this Canelo versus Triple G. From what I saw from, from what he did to Kodo. Cause this was a great fight, by the way. A really good fight. And outside of that, like I said, I'm looking to see what it is Canelo can do off his back foot, right? That's my biggest question. Am I gonna see it in this fight? I'm not gonna say. We just gonna see what happens. But it's gonna be good though. It's gonna be good. And Kodo was no slouch. Shout out to Kodo for winning his fight on this past weekend, even though HBO has been competing with, uh, with Showtime. Showtime has been doing a hell of a job this year. Even with the three middleweight bouts they giving us in October 14th, Showtime, they doing it. HBO, you gotta catch up. You have to catch up. Shots out to Ezekiel. He said, when Triple G catches Canelo, he will go down. Hey, all it take is that one shot from, from Ganati to put Canelo to sleep. But it has to be perfect. He has to time it perfect. Everything has to be perfect for Triple G in this fight. And you're gonna see why. From what it's worth with Canelo and what Canelo brings to the table, we will see for sure how good Canelo is. Canelo's no slouch. We can't, we can't sit here and act like, you know, the power of Ganati is just going to be too much for Canelo. But Canelo is a real pure good boxer. And as you see in this fight, he's establishing the jab early. But you have to like that from him. He looks real light on his feet. But you can, but you can say this, he's gonna be a little bit heavier in his fight with, uh, Ganati versus his fight with Kodo. So he will be a little bit heavier in this fight. And also we talked about how Canelo loves to, he could get himself in a rhythm to where he's doing the same thing over and over and over again, right? And that can be bad for Canelo when he faces a guy like Triple G. And what I was talking about was if you watch Canelo, look at, look at his movement in this round. And then when we get to around probably three or four, you will see the same exact thing from Canelo. The way he reset, the way he gather his feet, his movement from moving from left to right, right to left. It, it, it would be the same pattern almost. But Kodo couldn't figure that out. But a guy like Ganati, he, he's really smart. I could see him figuring that out. One Hung, shout out to One Hung. He said 36 minutes of pressure and power punches every minute, every round. Can Canelo handle that? That's what, that's what we're trying to find out. I wanna see Canelo fighting on his back foot. But what we do see is Canelo's gonna be throwing big shots, right? At Triple G. Really big shots. See the left hook missing from Kodo. But you see Kodo doubling up, tripling up on a jab. That is something that Ganati is really good at is establishing his jab and keeping the distance and being able to control you to set up his power punches. And we saw that in his, in the fight with, uh, with Jacobs. And even in his other fights, he is really good with the jab. But everybody was in the building that night. But let me ask you guys. Shout out to Leo Washington. Leo said, uh, Triple G make, make guys bloody, no one punch KO. Hey, it might be, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be a one punch KO with Canelo because Canelo is a proven champion, you know? But it could happen. Ezekiel said he did it again against David Lemieux. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. What, what Ganati did to David Lemieux was just, was just crazy. And David Lemieux right now, he's on a tear, right? He's on a tear. And possibly down the road, we could see a rematch between these two. Possibly. But the way that first fight was, that's something that I don't wanna see again. Oh yeah, Alan, absolutely. Canelo versus, uh, Lemieux. Hey, that would be a good fight. And we'll see a lot from, uh, because Lemieux is so much better than what he was when he faced Triple G the first time. That now, if you see him, he's very patient and, and his power, he's just a whole lot more explosive than what I'm accustomed to seeing him be. But if you look at like Canelo, man, he just sits on all his punches, right? He tries to put a lot of emphasis on each punch that he throws. Ezekiel, I can't tell you who I'm going for yet. We'll do that on another prediction show. Coming up on September 15th, right before the fight. Hung, you made a great point about Canelo putting too much muscle on his body, but I don't think he did. I don't think he put too much muscle on his body because like I said, at the, uh, media workouts, man, he looked really good. He looked really good. What a nice hook by Canelo. But you see him, he, he loves to sit on his punches, man. And a guy like Ganati, he's not gonna sit there like Kodo was and, and, and take two or three shots, right? He's not gonna do that. He's gonna respond and respond effectively. But I love how Canelo mixes up his punches. He'll throw in some hooks. He'll throw in some uppercuts. He just makes it up really well. But in this fight in particular, like, like with me, I was saying Canelo was a whole lot more fluid in this fight than he was with Julio Cesar Chavez. With Chavez, it just seemed as though he was, he was tight, right? And of course, he was able to get off a bevel of punches against Chavez because Chavez was not throwing back, which was a problem for me, but I think Chavez was there for the payday. And we talked about that on yesterday, the whole little setup or whatnot, but if he could knock out Chavez, I mean, do y'all really think he's gonna knock out Ganati? Shots out to Melinda. She said Triple G hurt Lemieux so bad that he, that, that was his best performance I ever saw in a Triple G fight. Hey, Melinda, that was a good fight. That really was. But I love how Kodo starts the round, right? He started round three off really good. But it's as if, like when you watch Kodo in this fight in particular, it was like he was almost waiting for, for Canelo to throw shots, right? But I just think that Triple G is a little bit more of a workhorse, um, than Kodo. Kodo was kinda like picking his shots on where he wanted to throw his shots, where he wanted to land. But in this fight in particular, nice stiff jab to the body. See, Canelo gets so comfortable. If you just look at his feet, he gets so comfortable that he becomes just flat footed, right? He sits, I just hate the fact that he's so flat footed. And with a guy like Triple G, can Canelo fight off his back foot, backing up? You saw how he was backing up right there with, with Kodo? It's gonna be like that with Triple G all night, all night. And it seems like the only way his shots have power is if he sits on his punches. Man, I'm just sitting here, I'm, I'm looking, wow. Would it be dangerous though? As if like when they stand toe to toe, right? I'm really looking forward to when these guys stand toe to toe and when they fight each other toe to toe because that's gonna be, that's gonna be crazy. Watching these guys go toe to toe. And, and one thing is if you do notice something about Kodo was Kodo in this fight, he was well prepared. Like, don't get me twisted, like, I was just sitting there listening to what him and Freddie Roach was talking in the corner and they was communicating very well. It was just, he didn't know, he didn't know how to do anything different to make Canelo be uncomfortable, right? Canelo was just so comfortable. That's why I said he was fighting him flat footed because he was so comfortable. Boom, nice right hand. But it's only gonna get better, right? Nice right hand by Kodo. But that jab, man, is sticking from Kodo. And like I said, that jab from Ganati, that bad boy's gonna stick. When we watch that fight, I'm telling you, watch how many times Canelo hits snapbacks, especially when he just standing there flat footed. Ooh. Is that a lack of power from Alvarez that we just saw there? Nice combination by Kodo. See, but it's like, even though Kodo caught those shots, Kodo's just standing there like pretty much kinda waiting for Canelo to decide when he wants to throw his shots. He's not making Canelo come to him. He's just standing there. Even though it looked like Kodo's moving around the ring, but to me, it's just like, he's not giving Canelo a chance to, to have to chase him, right? I don't think ring generalship was there at all for Kodo in this fight. And I think a way to beat Canelo is by having good footwork. Floyd showed us that. You have to make Canelo chase you. And that's why Floyd utilized his footwork against a guy in Canelo because Canelo is just so flat footed, man. Man, that was a good round. That was a really good round. But like I said, I just didn't see. Much from. From Kodo as far as him trying to make Canelo come to him. He's right there in Canelo's face the whole time. The whole entire time, he's right there in his face. That's why I said I wanna see. Who can put Canelo in position? I mean, can Ganati put Canelo in a position to where he's having to? To kinda, I don't wanna say chase. But make him move around the ring. I love that feint to the body and coming back with the overhand right. I seen him throw that that combination a lot when he fought. Uh when he fought uh Mayweather. Even against Angulo, he'll feint to the body and come over the top with the right hand. Canelo is really good at that. Nice right hand by Canelo. See, it's like Kodo, he, if you look at his footwork, it's like he plans to move to to one spot in particular, but he. It's just as though like you don't go nowhere. It's easy for Canelo to kinda like track him down. Cut the ring off. Hmm. Nice right hand by Canelo. Good defense by Canelo, right? That's gonna be on display is the defense of Canelo in this fight. I'm really looking forward to seeing. How's he going to be able to dodge shots from uh Triple G? Alan said it makes him sad seeing Kodo. He has never been the same since dude fought him with the rose of quarters in his gloves. Oh yeah, Antonio Margarito. Man. I was actually watching previews of that. Well, it was like uh replays of that fight today. Um somebody had it on IG. They was kinda showing it on IG. And yeah, man, Kodo was a freaking beast before that happened. He was a beast against against Mayweather too, though. I think Kodo was like at his best against Mayweather. That was a really good fight. Kodo fought a really good fight that fight. But yeah, that fight made me feel real bad for Kodo, man. Real bad. But that jab, man, I'm telling you, Kodo really could have could have controlled this fight a whole lot more. If he would have utilized his jab. Throughout the fight. Because you'll see him throw. Throw the jab and he'll double up, triple up on it, but then he'll go away from it. And then we didn't see any feints at all from uh Kodo. No feints. He didn't feint to the body, come, he didn't do any of that. I think Freddie Roach wanted him to be more of a of a counter fighter in this fight, but. He's dictating the pace like you hear Freddie Roach saying. Uh Kodo's letting him dictate the pace. And that's crazy because a guy in Ganati, he controls like the fight. He controls the fight. We saw Ganati when he controlled the fight against uh Gero Rosado, right? That fight had so many ups and downs, but it wasn't too many ups and downs as far as Ganati was concerned. It was more so if Ganati was really trying to like go for the juggler in that fight. But for Canelo, we really have to see what is the difference? What is the difference in? Round six to seven, now that he's gonna be fighting a little bit heavier. Because this probably be the heaviest Kodo, not Kodo, but Canelo has fought since uh. His first time, right? Him hitting that one sixty. Everything else been at a catch weight. He even fought uh Chavez on a catch weight. Nice right hand by Kodo, I mean Canelo. But if you're Kodo, where's the jab? You know what I mean? Kodo is not establishing a jab. He's sitting there. Letting Canelo control the distance and everything. I think Kodo had a problem with as far as like power was concerned in this fight. Because I felt as though, if you look at it, Canelo is pretty much like eating majority of his shots. And so that's showing that, hey, your power's ineffective. And so it's maybe that's a reason why Canelo fought him flat footed. And made it real easy for himself to sit down on his punches and 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 throw shots with power. Because he didn't respect the power of Kodo. That's what I'm starting to believe more and more when I watched this fight. Shout out to D Burks. Hung says it's called Canelo weight, not catch weight. That's a good one. That's a good one. You're right, man. It is called Canelo weight, man. I mean, doggone every single fight, man. If you're a fighter, either you're coming up to catch Canelo or you going down to catch Canelo. I love that jab and that hook followed by that hook by Canelo. That is, that is. That can. Be a pretty good combination for Ganati. I mean, as far as like. When you, when you think about this fight. We see what Canelo looks like right here, and this is in twenty fifteen, right? But we talked about earlier, how much? Will the weight affect him? Will he tire out, you know, within the championship rounds? Is that what you guys thinking? That it'll be the championship rounds that Canelo may slow down on? See, but you see when he feint with that left hand and come back to the body? God, man. Way he sets up his feints and gets off his shots are very beautiful. Yeah, that left hook, man, if he fought that with a left hook, that would have been crazy. Or an uppercut. That uppercut was there too, because Kodo has head, he had his head down. But if you see. Oh, nice right hand by Kodo. He should go back to the jab. Go back to the jab, man. Double triple up on the jab. There you go. I'm telling you, that feint. I don't know how often he's gonna do that against Triple G. Where he touch you with the left hand and either come to the body or come over the top. Hey, I don't know how how often he's gonna do that, but you see that. As a weapon in his uh in his arsenal. And you gotta like that from Kodo, I mean from Canelo. You gotta like that. Nice uppercut. Even though it was blocked by Kodo. See, it just seemed like Kodo's shots are starting to slow down, right? See, but it's just like, oh, nice right hand by Canelo. Oof. See, Kodo tried to go to the body right there. Wow. I'm just saying, I'm 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 thinking about, what is it that? Kodo stood up on. And did not do in that round. He could have done it in the previous two rounds. But what I'm seeing is 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 a level of consistency from. From Canelo not respecting the power of uh Kodo at all, even though Kodo was getting off. Getting off some few punches, I just don't see anything else in return to them of what he's doing. See, but if it was thrown at that, you had to worry about that at all. Oh, nice right hand. Like if you're Kodo, man, you really want him to put some power behind his shots. Like, where's the power? It is if it don't exist. Oh, nice left hook by by Canelo. Oh, nice right hand. Oh, nice right hand again. He don't give, he don't care at all about Canelo and the shot he throw, his power, whatever the case may be. He don't care at all. You see him not give this guy no love whatsoever. To me, I don't know if it's Kodo's tired, right? Or was he tired really early in this fight? Even though he was able to go the distance. But man, as far as his, the power on his punches. It's just not there. It's not there at all. Oh, nice, nice uppercut to the body. Now, it's like Canelo is just in a in a tear session, right? And these are the rounds where we really wanna see the condition. Of Canelo, he faces a guy in Triple G, the condition gonna be there. And one thing about. About Canelo, what we can count on is him being in great shape. But he overworked himself for this fight, given the fact that this is probably the biggest fights of his career outside of Mayweather fight. But then again, I mean, it needs to be seen. I'm really looking forward to seeing what it is that we can get from uh. See, and Freddie right now is telling him, don't throw a lazy jab. But the thing is, as far as him throwing a lazy jab. Me. Oh, nice. But me, I don't even think it need to be a lazy jab, but you see right here? If he utilizes his jab good enough, I'm telling you. Following up doubling up, tripling up on his jab, Canelo's not gonna sit there in the pocket. And get off shots. He's not gonna do that at all. Because Kodo has the footwork to move around the ring. See, boom, right there, he should have been throwing a jab, but you let Canelo get off first. Boom, boom, right there, he could have pulled up on the jab again. Now he does it to the body. He does it to the body. See, but remember, if you guys were paying attention, what I talked about earlier. Remember when I said that in this fight? We wanna see Canelo, we're going to see Canelo do the same thing two or three times in this fight. He did the same thing two or three times as far as like his reset and how he moves. When he re- reset his feet, he always moved to the left first, always. That's something I noticed in his game. The left to the body there. Oh, nice. Nice. But you see, he now he's trying to get back to the jab. But Kodo's a wonderful chin. By far, great chin. Oh, nice left hand. Put that left hand left there again. It was like Kodo just, he slowed down, right? He was able to move, he was in right, keep his feet moving. He was doing that early in the fight. He's trying to pick it up now. Shout out to Johnny, he said Triple G's gonna put that work on, on, uh, Canelo. I know yesterday, I noticed this, yesterday I had a lot of people saying that, uh, Canelo was gonna, gonna get that work, right? But now, we're starting to see more of the Triple G fans come out. That's interesting. Let's see this replay, boom, nice break up to the body. There he go with that, he fainted the uppercut to come back to the body. Fainted the uppercut to come back to the body, boy, that means he had time. He had a hell of a lot of time to be able to get off that. Canelo is so good at trying. We see. Oh, nice right hand. See? It seems as though like Canelo just like slowed down, right? Is he taking the round off? I mean, it's like he's trying almost to get to position. If anything, you could see the condition, the condition of, uh, Cotto. The condition of Cotto is there. But if he had power, like I said, it just seems as though in this round, in particular, round 10, Canelo got tired, you can see it. It's like he's just slowed down. And then the guy you're facing in Triple G, who's gonna land power shot after power shot? Shout out to Hector. Shout out to my boy CJ. But yeah, Hector, I think he was tired, man, round 10, I'm just, I was just looking at his condition. Round eight, he kinda slowed down, he was still doing the same thing. Round nine, it seemed to get a little bit slower, and then now, in this round, it was just like, man, it was just very noticeable. Very noticeable. But damn it, I'm mad at Cotto because Cotto did not capitalize on anything. You hear Freddie Roach telling him, he's getting frustrated, I mean, the movement of Cotto is there, right? Floyd showed us if you move around the ring, you can confuse Canelo, we saw that in the Lara fight, you can confuse Canelo. But you have to throw punches. You have to throw punches. Don't sit there in front of him and be a sitting target. Because right now, we see in Canelo game, he has a very, he has flaws in my eyes, because he's very flat footed, right? He sit, he sit on his punches, and he's not able to get off those power shots if you're moving around the ring. Yeah, Hector, you could kinda tell he was trying to win by points, but at the same time, you see, he did it again, I told you, when Canelo reset his feet, man, he does the same thing. Oh, nice right hand by Cotto. He does the same thing, man. In Triple G, a guy like Triple G who has fought so many amateur fights, he'll pick up on that shit, man, easy. Oh. Oh. Okay, see, that's what I wanted to see from Cotto, man, let them hands go. Phew, that body shot hurt Cotto. Yeah, Cotto didn't want no more smoke, right? Damn it, the video's missing up. Oh. Oh, nice right hand over the top. You can kinda see Canelo kinda get stronger in the 11, like he caught his wind. But then again, like Cotto is not giving. There you go, Cotto moving around the ring. Yeah, Raymond, man, that short left, god. See, Cotto has the footwork, man, but he just didn't have the offensive skills to throw in those angles, right, that he wanted them to be in. Like you know how Lomachenko is able to get in those angles and get off punches? That's what you wanted to see from like, in this fight from Cotto. Cotto's moving around the ring, he's getting himself in position to where he got good angles, but shit, he ain't throwing no punches. You think he was scared of the power? But it seems like Canelo, I mean, the only way Canelo can really catch you with a good shot is like I said, if he's standing on his feet. Boom, that was that short left. Hey, those power shots did have him scared, though. But that's cause, that's Cotto's fault, though, cause he's just standing there, letting this man tee off on him, flat footed. Uh, there you go again. Oh, nice, nice! Hey, you guys, I'm just sitting here thinking, right, while I'm watching this fight? Ooh! I'm gonna say this after the fight. Cause this shit's just exciting, this whole round. There's that jab from Cotto. See, but think about it, if Cotto was doubling up on that jab with the left hand, he could have been fighting with the left hand and coming over the top with the right, I swear that shit would have worked in the, in his latter, latter part of the fight, it would have worked. If he was establishing the left hand early in the fight, he would have been able to feint with that left hand and come over the top with the right, easy. Ramon said, watch for Canelo's left. Oof! Hmm, nice uppercut. Damn! Cotto, man. Man, that left hand that was landing all night, oh! I don't know if that left gonna land on Ganati like that, though. Damn, that was a hell of a fight, that was a hell of a fight, man. That was a really good fight, but I just seen so many mistakes on Cotto's end that he could have capitalized on, so many mistakes on Canelo's end that he could have capitalized on. But, really, when you think about it, Canelo hasn't been in a fight of this magnitude since then, think about that. Cotto just came back and fought against, what is it, what is his name, Kamagai? After this loss, think about that. After this loss, so, he just came back. Now, Canelo, he hasn't fought anybody that took him the distance like this, you know, recent. But damn, I'm gonna tell y'all what I was thinking about, right? This is what I was thinking about. I was thinking about this, say we get to round 12, right? And Hector, I want you to tell me your thoughts. Say we get to round 12. Do y'all not think that's gonna be the most exciting fucking round of boxing we probably will see in a long time? Maybe outside of what we're gonna get from Erickson Lubin and Charlo, right? Cause we know that's gonna be a good fight, but damn it, these two guys right here, Canelo and Golovkin, say they make it to round 12, blood, sweat and tears. Do you guys not think that's gonna be the best round we seen in boxing in a long time? Especially if the fight is close? Damn it, that's how I want it, I want it like that, I don't wanna knockout. If a knockout comes, let that motherfucker comes in the 12th round, right? I'd rather have it in the 12th round where the fight is close, really close, and you know, you determine the winner, boom, somebody hit the canvas, right? That's how I want this fight to be. I don't want it to be one sided, one guy just dominate, I don't want that, I don't want Triple G to just come in and dominate, I don't want Canelo to just come in and dominate. I want both of these guys to make it very competitive, to the point to where we get to round 12, right? Blood, sweat and tears, you got Canelo bleeding, I mean, cause I think he's gonna, he's gonna be cut up. I ain't even gonna flex, I feel as though he's gonna be cut up. And, you know, Triple G may have, you know, something on him, ain't no telling, you know, depending if he put his guard up or not, cause that motherfucker gonna be going for the kill, just being real, but it's just, I don't know, just round 12 to me, if you guys could just run that in your heads for a second, imagine how the 12th round will be. It's gonna be crazy. This fight's gonna be lit, and I'm really looking forward to it, I'm telling you, I'm too excited, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be living it up, right, come fight night. But what do you guys think, though? What is it that you saw in this fight? From Canelo, that you think maybe he could probably add to his arsenal when he fight Triple G? Because we know Triple G's gonna come forward, we know Triple G is not going to have the same footwork as a Cotto, the same footwork as a Lara, the same footwork as a Mayweather, he's not gonna have that, right? So we're gonna see a lot of toe to toe action from these two guys. But I'm really looking forward to seeing what you all think as far as watching this film review. What is it that you seen from Canelo that stands out? Shout out to Hector, he said, I think that is close, they're going to go at it hard, I think Canelo will be more tired because he's not used to getting hit by so much power, that is true, man, that is true, and we saw in the 10th round, right? The 10th round, he slowed down, but we saw that coming in round eight, nine, then 10, 10 it just, you could really see it. Round eight, you started to see it, right? Later on in the round, later on in the round, he stopped throwing, and he was just, you could see when he reset his feet, he just trotted a little bit. And then, he was trying to slowly pivot to the left, right, that was it, but now, when he get to round nine, round 10, you saw him just completely like, damn, I'm tired, right? It was almost as if Cotto could have capitalized off that, but Cotto, to me, I just think his power just wasn't even there. So Canelo wasn't even ca- caring too much about backing up from Cotto because of the power, but when he faced this guy in Ganati, he's gonna have some serious power to deal with. And it's gonna change this fight, it's gonna change this whole entire fight. But tomorrow is going down, I think everybody, I thank everybody for tuning in on tonight. Tomorrow, I believe, did you guys choose, choose the fight for tomorrow, for Triple G? Did we choose Jacobs? I think we chose Jacobs. If we chose Jacobs, let me know in the comments, and, uh, we had a Jacobs fight tomorrow, if we chose Jacobs. And to me, that was probably the fight that we need to see again, I think we did choose Jacobs yesterday, cause we talked about, you know, the rescoring and all of that, of, uh, doing that fight, I'm actually gonna score that fight again, probably for the 10th time, uh, and I keep coming up with the same score, 114, 113. Hector, that, was that your card? Did you have 114, 113 in that fight? It was so close. Some people had it 115, 113, maybe, one or something, I don't know. My fight was so close, though, like I had Jacobs by a point. The very first time I watched the fight, I had Ganati, then I watched it again, I had Jacobs, then I watched it again, I had Ganati, then I watched it again, I had Jacobs, it, it just keep flip flopping, flip flopping with me, it's crazy. But tomorrow, we'll do film review, uh, with Ganati versus Daniel Jacobs. That was a really good fight, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that jab from Triple G, I promise you. If we look at this fight right here with Cotto, and how many times Cotto missed the jab? When we see that fight with Jacobs, Jacobs was, I'm telling you, that jab that jab was landing all night from Triple G, and Jacobs head was snapping back all night long. That's what I'm saying, it's gonna be like that with, if Canelo fight flat footed, like he did against Kodo, not moving his feet, I'm telling you, not working their angles, I'm telling you, that jab is gonna be serious. Oh yeah, man, he did move, move better because of Jacobs powers, man, and that's what I tell people, Jacobs, man, shh. I'm just ready, I'm ready to see Jacobs, you know, in a, in another big fight. I think he has something to prove. But, uh, that was a really good fight, and we gonna see that tomorrow, I'm gonna bring that fight tomorrow, and, uh, I'm looking forward, uh, to getting up with everybody on tomorrow. Thank you all for tuning in, liking, share the show, make sure you like Jeremy Sports Network, follow me on IG at it'smytime underscore 229. Uh, also follow me on Twitter, at Jeremy underscore sports, and I'm telling you, YouTube as well, YouTube as well, at Jeremy Sports Network. You'll be able to see a lot of the young talent that we have, interviews, um, everything, right there on that channel. So, uh, tune in, and in case you wanna run this back, you can run it back on Facebook or YouTube, so. This show is brought to you by King J Productions. Thank each and every one of you for tuning in, and hey, you guys have a wonderful night. This is Jeremy Sports Network signing out, peace.